At six o'clock, I'm calling this meeting to order. Good evening and welcome everyone. This meeting is being recorded and will be available on the city's YouTube channel. We'll move on to roll call, please stay with me.
Mary Ann Winright here.
I'm in here.
Dan Wosniak, Mike here, Tom Murray.
Thank you, moving on to item number four, approval of the consent agenda. Were there any questions on the consent agenda contents? Appearing none, we'll move on to the other.
Wait, did we get a motion?
No.
Excuse me, motion to adopt the consent agenda. All there, aye?
Aye.
Who moved?
I didn't. Do you need some of this?
Oh, maybe.
Okay. All right, thank you. Sarah Stacey, thank you, please sit down.
There we go, we have Sheriff's Office. All right, this report is from December tenth through January fourteenth. Uh, looks like December hours were met. And I'm seeing ninety-eight calls for service. Any comments in terms of your questions?
I don't know if there are any questions for the deputy.
Maybe, no?
Just try to stay warm on that.
Yeah, I'm trying. Thanks guys.
All right, included in your package, you have reports for the rest of the departments, including a new report, the city administrator's report. Does anyone have questions for any of those departments?
It looks like building department made a, somebody rang, Brian, fingered?
We made the applicator. So we're just out of a, we had a boom and so forth, so we have an, we have an application that and not a no maker.
No maker.
Yeah, we're still, you know, we talked about making, buying something, making something. And as we're doing, we bought some brine from the DOT and playing with it a little bit. And I got some pictures on my phone, I can show you some of the difference of what we're playing with it. Some streets you see a huge difference, other streets, eh, I'm not too sure yet. So I'm fifty-fifty still.
Yeah, I came home the other day, I was like, oh, the streets are different, our streets, and I kept going up, and I was like.
Your street, your street worked awesome. And then, but what cemetery? No, so I, well, some of it, you know, playing with the chip seal, the asphalt, kind of pretty, kind of playing with a little bit, doesn't seem, because we have the, on the new truck, we have the, um, uh, pre-wet system on it, which is brine, which activate everything faster, so this is kind of experimenting with it. So a few totes worth and you've seen what's going on and that with that, it doesn't necessarily change my thoughts on the maker, but maybe a little bit, a lesser size, what's maybe needed because of the amount that we sprayed with what we have. We got a lot of streets done with a small amount, it was just crazy. I can't believe how far away. So, so hopefully personally, some doesn't, but we experimented.
Any other questions for them or any of the other departments?
Can I say something?
Chief.
I just wanted to throw a couple of things out that I didn't know if it made it into the recorder now, just because it's last minute info. But I did receive information from Walferd, so they're gonna keep their tax base the same, we talked about that last meeting. Actually went up about four thousand dollars on the total. And today we received a donation from Toyota Financial for five thousand dollars for bunker gear. And in the same category, we have our grant, did you put that in there, Bert?
I think I wrote that in there.
So our grant that we're trying to, we're filed with, uh,
Assistance the Firefighters Grant.
Yeah, we have G grant, uh, is for bunker gear also, so hopefully that goes through in margin. We don't have to spend a hundred thousand on one of the bunker gears.
Is that on my, was my question, Bert?
Yes, a hundred thousand.
And how many units is that?
Twenty. About five grand a set. But we did raise, see five thousand from Trobaro a couple of months ago, they've got our two newest firefighters bunker gear. Because they were an odd size, they were like tall and young and healthy. Bunker gear for people like that. And then we got another five thousand from Toyota, so anyway, I just wanted to throw that out.
That's good news.
That's all I got.
Thank you. Any other questions or additions on the department's reports? Appearing none, we'll move on to item number six, which is the public hearing on the proposal to enter into a water revenue loan and dispersment agreement. I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing. Cynthia, did we receive any comments?
I did not.
And you want to just provide a very brief description Cynthia, what this entails?
Um, this is, uh, for a million two seventy-seven for water revenue SRF, um, anticipation project note.
Is there anyone here from the public that would like to comment on that during the public hearing? Paul Cole, do you have any discussion? Hearing none, or anyone online, excuse me? Okay, hearing no questions, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing. And we'll move on to item number seven, to consider the resolution to take action on that water revenue loan and dispersment agreement. entertain a motion, please?
Motion.
You second?
Second.
Roll call, please. Aye?
Aye, 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 aye.
Thank you. Moving on to item number eight, discussion of additional information about, uh, fire station project. Chiefs, thank you. Information in the packet, but why don't you go ahead and talk us through that?
Probably have better information than I do. Like, my biggest thing I wanted to ask, because this is, I'm new to this part of it, I've never had to do a building thing, I just do truck stuff. So with this, and these are just questions, so if I'm not, if I'm not aligned, just tell me again, because I don't know, but uh, with this project on the bidding process of it, if the the city was their own general contractor, do we still send out for bids, or do we need to get a general contractor appointed to get the plans all penciled in to send out for bids?
Where did we do the last time, Cynthia?
Well, when we did the last edition on the old city hall, we just did it, it was a hundred thousand dollar project and we just hired Kevin Costigan to build it and we never went through a bill, a bid process, of course that was in two thousand.
Five years ago.
You know, so I think things are probably different then, but I don't know, like the total project, which we presented to you was like three hundred thousand and that was with us throwing some things on that we weren't sure what we were gonna be able to do with. The maintenance department would do some of the trenching, pouring concrete for the electrical pads, stuff like that. So I didn't know what the process was, if you broke it into, say we have EIB do the structure. That's one part of it, and then you have the concrete company do the concrete, you have the electrical do the electrical.
Separate the scope.
If you separated the total.
It's, it's all one project, the bid limit is two hundred and six thousand.
And you cannot separate, you have to avoid the requirements. And certainly, the department should work on, you know, what you desire and stuff, and then work with Dustin for the, the bid requirements and, uh, it doesn't matter who the general is, what it matters is the cost of the project.
That was my question. I didn't know if you split it up into sessions, it could be.
Illegal.
So what do you got for me?
Well, so that, they haven't seen these three things, except if they looked at the packet, this is the, the site plan, site drawing, and then rendered view and the floor plan, I didn't know if you wanted to discuss any of those or.
Can you give an update, I know it was a couple of months ago, about the reason for this and what your constraints are now?
Well, we'd like to do with this part of, with this is, it would be, we would have one truck or one apparatus in there and then the majority of it would be used for training and storage. But there would be one truck in there for sure, maybe a trailer. They have a lot of equipment that we don't have on trucks that, like, we have grain bin rescue equipment that an insurance company, I don't know how many years ago, ten years ago, they were really big on getting grain bin safety going. And we were one of the departments that they said, hey, would you like to have this equipment free, well, it's, I don't know, back then it's five or six thousand dollars and it's like, sure, you know, if it's free. But it's set in the corner because we don't have a place to put it on an apparatus. So our future thinking was, if we did this building, then we would get an enclosed trailer to put that kind of stuff in that's just sitting on the floor, so you could just hook up to it and take it instead packing a truck in and throwing it all in the back of somebody's pickup. So then also with the trailer, you could use it like on a mass casual, mass casualty incident for putting a command center in, like, you know, in a flood or the derail show, you could set it up and have shelter for people or whatever, you know, not permanent, obviously, but. And but the main thing would be just have room in the station for training or equipment. Right now it just sets in a file, let it move from place to place when we need it. It was down at the city shop for a while, it's kind of spread out. Basically, the big, the biggest thing for it would be training.
So you'd park it, a truck in this new spot, which would from when we looked at it, it's gonna loosen up everything else going.
Yeah, yeah, when you were down, actually, well, it might even happen like that, the side by side that's there, that might even go in that area as well. But, yeah. But that's the main reason.
You have a future, on the far left there, would be the west side, you have future overhead door.
Actually, that was going to be future, but it was estimated to put it in anyway, at the time, that's kind of just perhaps, like, which we were kind of tossing it around and then we thought, look, if you're doing it, might as well do it all the same.
The biggest thing that impressed upon me when we're looking at that in more detail is how long it takes to pull a truck out. You're going to an emergency and you've got to be careful, you don't take the garage door out or take a pullout. Pull out, back in, three point, as you're getting out. You got an emergency, it's not waiting for stoplights. And that's what impressed upon me that, and then when I see the garage door, I thought, all right, you can pull in or back right in and you're gone, you're out type of thing, and loosens everything else up from there, but.
Any other questions? For the chief? I think you mentioned this last month. If this was accomplished, how long do you feel in years this would support your, your needs, any idea?
As long as I'm there.
Harvey?
I said as long as I'm there.
As long as you're there.
I'll maybe make him stay there.
Not much longer.
Now, we talked about that and I talked about it with Tom too, and he asked me the same question when he came down that day and looking around and I mean, it's gonna give you, until, my opinion, until you would have to go and buy yourself a ladder truck or an aerial to service your industrial part, depending on how big it gets, the building would be fine until that day. So, you know, ten years or whatever the, you know, the future would be to where you would build or find a spot to even build a fire station. But this, this mandate will definitely last for, I would think, ten years, don't you?
That's minimum.
I mean, it could last forever, really, it just depends on how far you wanted to go and what your needs are, until at least you would go to, say you get big enough that you turn into a career fire department and you start needing bedrooms and stuff like that. But as a volunteer department, it'll last as long as we need it to.
Easy then, well, he's not alive at all.
I have a question circling back to the fire station, well, for the project. Can't we bid that out and pull some of the items that the city wants to do? Like, if the city wants to do the trenching, like, some of that stuff, can't we bid it out and then have the city perform some small, some of the smaller items if they want to do that?
Like leaving as alternates?
Well, I mean, I've seen it at other places where they bid it out and then they just say, you know, this, like, the city is gonna do the trenching and the city will do this.
The city has to, it has a public bidding process, so it's, it's over that two hundred and six thousand, right?
Or you just leave it out of the, it's not necessary.
The city has to submit their own quote in the same manner that contractors submit quotes. And it will be read, and then if the city's quote for the work bid would be is the lowest, then.
So I, what I'm saying is, like, you bid, you bid the building out and you bid everything, but you leave, but you don't include the doors in the building.
Right, but.
Say, for example, we're into the doors after the bid's done.
You still, you show them as alternates, because you'd still want the vendors to give a price for that. And then the city would have to be the lowest. Um, and then you have to, it gets kind of tough with the math, so to make it apples to apples, you have to have the contractor, you had to itemize like, how much is the payment bond? And, um, you know, whatever else, and then deduct that from the contractor's quote of mobilization for that specific item, you know? Um, it's not just the worker's cell, it's in the, the administrative code, it spells it all out, it makes sense.
I just, I just get plans where, like, it says, like, like, the city's doing this, city's doing this, you're supposed to bid it, and then for the cheapest, probably.
I follow what you're saying.
I didn't think it was a thing, but.
Well.
I just know I've, I've seen it done in other places and it's just, they literally say, and I'm like, this is included in our quote, and then they, and they're like, oh, no, it says right on the plans, the city's gonna perform this work.
So then that will lower the bid, or lower the cost of what the project would be to.
Yeah, it just says on the plans that this, like, this work is done by the.
See, that's what I was curious, that you lowered it, if the city did something, then make it be under the official bid.
Yeah, it wasn't like major stuff, it was, it was.
That might have been.
It would be like small things, like the parking lot, strike, for example, the city would do their own, if they have people that do that. And so you just don't have it included, it's excluded from the bid scope.
That's not how it, describes it, the legal way to do it, and they have a code.
We don't want to break up.
No.
How about Walferd participation? Um, since we're increasing our services or adding more, is that?
Well, they already increased their tax rate to help them purchase trucks.
If we don't participate in their station expenses.
You don't, no. They pay for everything that happens down there, we just hold trucks in it. And actually, that was actually an option down onto that station too, but down to that station, that is right in the middle of the drainage from the north side of town, so they didn't.
Any other questions for the chief? This is a discussion only topic, but I'm assuming you'd like some guidance?
Well, I think I've got that, I have to get some plans drawn up to see about getting one for a bid. Yeah, well, I'll meet with them after this to go into the process. I'll stop down during the week.
Excellent.
When I get done.
Soon.
I'll also provide a report to council, outlining the law and what the law says.
Okay. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number nine, uh, just a note, items nine through thirteen are procedural updates due to the addition of a city administrator into this procedure process, so that's the reason for these very briefly. The first one is, um, authorizing people on the city bank accounts, don't we, I want to talk about that.
Um, we removed the mayor pro temp and put Dustin in, so there's still five of us, we didn't see the need to have six. Any two of the five can sign.
Questions on that? Is that need a motion?
Motion, I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Aye, 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 aye.
Aye. Thank you. Moving on to the next one, item number ten. Ordinance one sixteen is amending chapter fifteen, which describes, um, the mayor's responsibilities, the mayor's salary, injects the city administrator into that, you'll see in our packet regarding the actual salary, there's, um, survey that Dustin conducted, on behalf of Dustin, conducted, and also the, um, the updated wording, so.
In our current chapter.
And.
And, um, the change in compensation, um, never takes effect until after the next regular municipal election, so it wouldn't be, that's what I think it says on there, effective January one of twenty-six.
And the, the updates that I made, the updates that I made were Cynthia's work as well as comparing it to what, uh, Marquita and Mark Jackson gave us through their report as well as statute. So I tried to mirror the two. And the only open ended question is, uh, mayor's compensation. The original proposal was three thousand, after talking with the mayor, she proposed six thousand, so that's what, why Cynthia did the survey, so you have the information. You did, if you're okay with six thousand, that's fine, if not, just amend it, amend, make a, make a motion, amend it with, with an update of what you, that number looks like to you.
And the current mayor's salary is three thousand.
I'm probably taking down the, if you take out the two outliers that Marshall went by and, and by the salaries of Tiff and the Bell playing, you get right in the four thousand range.
In the ordinance, it doesn't say it reduces under the purpose on the feed out bonus year.
What?
Your ordinance, it's not added?
It's to six.
There's the curves.
Yeah, I saw that.
The motion says three, I think.
There's a third, that's what you did. Quite admitted, something on your purpose, very, uh, section one purpose. The end of that, very good.
Oh, okay, then that's just, it was a typo from the first draft.
That's what I'm.
Oh, okay, yeah, so whatever number you end up, we'll make sure it's there and.
Oh, that's a question, yeah. So is that a motion, Mike?
I'm saying.
We're, we're, we're down. How, how did we get to eight thousand?
That's the current.
That's current.
So right, but how did we? So it went from six. I'm sorry, I didn't put. It changed to eight a few years ago, right, from seventy-five hundred?
From, from five.
Or five, anyway.
It was an increase in responsibilities and things that they were doing, so we felt, uh, it was fair to compensate the mayor more as his role expanded in, like, development meetings, NPOs, all that good stuff. And then with a reduction of responsibility, I would just have it, because it also lines up essentially with the, uh, city's list of, and the survey is taken out the two outliers for the highest and lowest, and we provide a phone as well. So my motion would be adjusted to six thousand, was it number two hundred fifteen oh four, effective after the next election, January one twenty-six, from eight to four.
All the other changes are fine within your mind?
I didn't see any, yeah, I didn't see anything. Need one there.
Well, there's a motion on the floor, need a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call, please, Mary Ann. Aye?
Aye. Aye, aye, aye.
Want to prepare us, thank you.
Uh, just to clarify, everything else in the ordinance is okay, based on the motion, it's just, uh, adjusting the mayor's salary to four thousand dollars.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so, um, that was the first reading, do you want to consider suspending?
Motion.
Okay, second. Roll call, please. Aye?
Aye, 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 aye.
And finally, I'll consider a motion for final passage and adoption.
Motion, second.
Roll call, please.
Aye, 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 aye.
Thank you. Move on to item number eleven. The next two, eleven and twelve, purchasing policy and credit card policy are discussion only. We wanted to run those two items past the auditors while they were here. I think we're real close to having that squared away, but for tonight's purposes, it's just strictly a discussion. Anybody see anything in there that you wanted to ask questions about in number eleven, which is the purchasing policy?
The only, the only thing that helps, like, as we're preparing for this, so that doesn't include a scavenger hunt and provide the what is, is.
What?
Speed, like what it was to, and what it is, like the changes.
Oh. So next meeting, when it's ready for approval, we'll have the old one.
For, for things like, so just speeds, thank you.
So for the next thing, if we can highlight what the changes were, that would be.
Highlight and attach the whole, yes, enough of this.
Okay.
And the auditor didn't have a problem, he just mentioned that maybe we should have a statement in there about, um, sales taxes exempt. Um, so we'll just make sure that's not already in there and add it if needed.
And I'm also gonna review it with department heads one last time, because I've already gotten some feedback on it, so we'll update it to make sure that it, that, that I'm not making the staff's life harder. That'll be done next week.
Any other questions on the purchasing policy specifically, you'll see that again next week, or month, excuse me? If not, um, number twelve is for, uh, credit card policy. Also had the auditors take a look at that. Any questions from the council? So we'll do the same thing next month, highlight the changes and present a two word form. Thank you. The next one, item number thirteen, is to update our council meeting agenda process and the meeting rule. Any questions on that?
I do on number nine, if you scroll down. I'm just looking for maybe a little clarification or be a little more specific on here. So if there's an agenda topic that the council wants, that the mayor declines to put on there, and we want to see it put on there.
The.
I'm reading this, is that we would have to wait till the next month to get it on there?
No, at the beginning of the meeting, there is a, I'm sorry.
No, I want you to.
At the beginning of the meeting, there is. At the beginning of the meeting, there is a section where you have the right to adjust the agenda by motion.
No.
No?
Not in Iowa. The agenda has to be posted twenty four hours in advance unless it's an emergency situation. So, but let's say the council has asked for something to be put on and on Wednesday you see the draft and it's not there, or somebody tells you, no, we've been told, no. Then I would say you appeal to the city administrator and, and have it added, so you may want, if you want that to be clarified.
And that's kind of what I was looking for clarification, either do we talk to the city administrator or I don't want to make it too complicated.
Wasn't it that two different council people had to ask to have it put back on?
That was something, if it had been defeated before and they wanted it reconsidered, this is, I think it's.
This is just an agenda item, like, let's say I want to talk about chickens. And the mayor says, no, we're not talking about chickens. And then I say, no, I like talking about chickens, and so does Dan, and so does Tom, we want chickens. And so it's like, do we need just a simple majority within the twenty four hour posting to get it put back on the agenda? That's kind of what I was.
Well, and you can't vote, you can't come up with a simple majority.
That's right, you're saying, okay, you have to email and say, don't reply all.
Well, no, you can't vote that way.
No, you can't.
You can't.
And I didn't realize that in number ten, it says adding, so that will have to be revised.
And that's where I wanted to know if something was not on the agenda and multiple people wanted, is there like a check to that if you can tell?
I thought there was, like, if, for example, the mayor said you can't put this on the agenda, something was, that you could add it the next.
Yeah, I believe number nine, that's what it's intended. We may have changed the wording somewhat when Dustin revises, but I believe number nine was for that.
So what about number ten?
Well, that's going to have to be changed because you can't add. Now, you can remove. And you can rearrange, but you can't add unless it's an emergency.
Yeah, I, yeah, my suggestion would be that we would counsel the Google that we take our action on this and we make some changes for next month.
Perfect. The way I understand number ten is this, is when the approval of the consent agenda, that is where number ten comes, comes in, so to add to my, your example of chickens, if I don't know, it means being majority there to have the chickens removed.
No, I'm going to have to amend my statement because I wasn't tracking that with statute. So if it's statute, I can't override that. So I will, I will honor to my.
Well, and you can leave, you know, add a sentence adding in case of an emergency.
Okay.
So if we have a tornado, you know, or, you know, something major's going on and we need a topic. As long as we justify, state the justification in the meeting, why that's being added within the twenty four hours, we can do it, but it has to really be justified.
Thank you.
So with this ordinance too, are we only allowed to rearrange your agenda at the beginning? Sometimes something show up and you do.
Right, someone shows up and we skip past it or, right?
By the way, at the beginning.
For example, the sheriff doesn't show up at the beginning of the meeting and then he shows up later and we're in the middle like long agenda, we'll stop what we're doing and go back and let him do his thing so he can go back out with the drawl. That's not changing the agenda, it's just allowing the report on the agenda.
It's changing the order of the agenda, whereas, correct me if I'm wrong, I think what she's saying is a statute, you can't change, you can change the order, but you can't change the content that's supposed to.
You can remove something, you just can't add something because people have to have notice of what you might discuss it.
We had one a couple of months ago where there was a shit, a topic that was saying like twenty on the list and a bunch of people here just for that.
Yeah.
And we, this is, we're already in the meeting a little bit and we moved into.
That's fine.
Right, we didn't change it, yeah, we didn't change the content, we just arranged the order.
I just wanted to make sure there is a way that if council wanted something out there, it could put on there. I mean, most things can probably wait a month. There, I would really.
That's been my experience in the past is when, like, if, if the mayor doesn't want something on there and doesn't put it on the agenda, then we had to add, put it on the next one.
You can see number eleven talks about the, the two council members from the prevailing side, that's what.
I know Mary Ann's talked about, because I remember that as well, where it's like, oh, she, you know, Brittany doesn't want to talk about whatever, and then, oh, I want it. Mary Ann wants to, so that means we have to now. I, I, I know they talk.
Yeah.
As long as there's recourse on, on it.
Yeah, we'll, we'll clarify, nine and ten.
Well, council, I apologize for my miscalculation. We'll get it fixed.
Okay, so no action on that item, awaiting clarification. Right. Well, those were the procedural updates and future updates for the federal meeting. We'll move on to item number thirteen. Now we have a series of items that are strictly setting public hearing dates. The first one is item number fourteen. We need a resolution to set a public hearing date for a rezoning request from Robert and Lois Bowlen forty five zero seven Agent Street, and the public hearing date would be February eleventh, and that is the regular.
Yeah, just to give you a little update, so we're in the process of looking at the zoning map and getting a revised zoning map, and we, Chris was looking at Bowlen's, remember? Heidi Fresh, he's going to go in there, they, you know, parceled off. So he did some research and they never reported the property split, and they don't want to record it. Well, we went ahead and re-zoned that new parcel, and so now we're taking it back to egg and not going to show it as a split. The, the plat is just not going to ever be recorded.
Motion for next meeting.
Thank you, need a second?
Second.
Roll call please. Aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
Thank you. Item number fifteen is also setting a public hearing date. This is rezoning request from, we, the city for the three twenty three Vanderbilt street, the property that was purchased by the library, correct?
By the city.
By the city.
From the Masonic lot.
Right, the library is part of the city, yes. We never got that. What was it, so we're going to?
Oh, it's going to go to our public.
See what this.
I forget what the public, to the public.
Yeah.
Yep.
So moved. So again, we're studying the hearing date for February eleventh, we've got a motion, need a second, please? Roll call please, Tom.
Aye, aye, aye.
Aye.
So that little swatch was never rezoned?
Yeah, oops. Yeah.
Oopsie.
Number sixteen. Resetting the public hearing date for a revised zoning map in February eleven.
In December, you set a hearing date of tonight, to adopt a new zoning map. Well, when we found these oopses, then we're not going to do that till February.
We need a motion to set that public hearing date to February eleven.
Motion, second.
Roll call please, Aaron. Aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
Thank you. One more, item number seventeen. Resolution to set a public hearing date of February eleventh to review an application for the state revolving fund, SRS. Loans, environmental information document, and the city's project plan sent in.
This hearing date is March eleventh.
Oh, March.
Because they require a thirty day publication comment period, is that what you called?
Notice.
Notice, yeah.
Normally, you need what?
Four, forty twenty.
Public hearing, you need thirty days, and then the public comment period is actually after that.
Okay. So with our meeting dates, we could not set it now and have it in February and still have the, the required date, so this is March eleven.
Motion, second.
Roll call please, Tom.
Aye, aye, aye.
Aye. Thank you. I love public hearings, states set. Moving on to item number eighteen. Session possible motion concerning quotes for the sanitary sewer rehab project. John and Barbara Bryan sharing information on that, bidding.
All right, so we have some good numbers, we have some really good numbers from municipal pipe tool. Good enough where we can pick both those alternates in the scope and still stay comfortably within budget. Because they were so, I checked all their math, the math was good, I followed up with them just to make sure there wasn't misunderstanding, you know. They're comfortable with their numbers. All rolling, they're just wanting to be treated better than. So municipal pipe is, they do good work, they've been around forever. And I believe they're the only one out of those three that are actually based in Iowa, around Hudson, I think, so. We recommend awarding it to municipal pipe tool. Base quote plus both alternates in addition to and this was spelled out, the project medium one percent up to all the, to bidders, is adding three working days for each alternate accepted, so six working days total. Being added for a, for in total of twenty days. Any questions?
This is for the lines we televised way back when.
Some of them, yeah. Just enough to fit in the seventy thousand. Like a start of the worst spots.
Yeah, and this is for lying only by, there's no point in preparing the old former affairs, you know.
There's two that were in the base ball that they weren't able to finish televising because there was service pass protruding too far into the pipe. And I, whoever televised it at that time, they had the equipment with them to turn those taps off, finish televising, so we're going to have this contractor, you know, woman, do that work and give us the full video so we can use it for next year's package.
And John, there's some situations, isn't there, that there may be some disruption of service that we'll need to communicate with residents?
Yeah, and it is already in pseudo specs that says the contractor has, has to have like a notification program. And basically, it's all been doing minister the notices and go to, go to Dublin. And obviously, Brian and I can assist with that too. You know, and since most, all these lines, maybe one of these manors is actually out on the street, there are a lot of mine in backyards. So we'll have to coordinate with property owners on that, getting access. And any other special considerations? Somebody wants to afford a potty. That's even already in pseudo spec, because it's a resident requested for it, I mean temporarily, I give it to them, so.
How long would they be out of service, John, on a average?
Just the day that they're in front of their property, yeah, just for one day usually. It's not even twenty four hours. Yeah, it's eight hours or less generally. And then you know, it's one of those things where they go ahead and they, they pull a liner through. They don't want the residents running water, because obviously the water can corrode the resin and everything else while it's hearing. You know, somebody accidentally does, in the world, happens all the time. Obviously, you have the volume of your service pipe. And there's enough volume there to handle a few or flushes, but it's not going to make its way out of the main until they come back through and cut those open. And then we're having them go in and inserting liner, you know, a foot or two up, the service pipe sealed and that connection off too, so. That's one of those things, I'm sure people, you know, thinking of the bathroom toilet, just don't flush it. Put it down so it doesn't. One is the work looking to be completed. So we have a late start date of it was the first Monday in June. Early start date of, it was April fourteenth, we gave a wire raise, or just because we wanted you know, it's cheaper quotes a little bit. You know, the benefit of going later in early June, you know, obviously it drives, so if they have to access backyards it's going to be a swampy mess, crap, everything, so. Obviously, if you go ahead and award this, I'll be in touch with municipal pipe tool, when we need, we'll do the typical pre-construction meeting, everything else here, it was just a small project. Get an idea when they're going to start, what they're going to do for, for the notices, for the residents and so on, so.
Any other questions for John or Brian? So you're looking for a motion to award?
The merger municipal pipe tool.
There's two motion.
Motion for municipal with both alternate codes attached and an additional, what do you say, six days?
Yeah.
For title completion.
Thank you. Need a second? All in favor, please?
It's a resolution.
It doesn't say that on the agenda.
Well, it is, there's a resolution.
Okay, so. Agenda correction, it is a resolution, so I need a roll call from this. Aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
Thank you. Thanks, John. Number five nineteen. Consider a resolution to enter into an agreement with any, or credit card processor.
So when we started taking credit cards, it was pace payment systems, they got bought out, and now the company that bought them out, it's been bought out, so it's really the, the same card processor, just new company owning them again, and so we have to sign new agreements.
Let's, I looked through this, what's the difference between agreement one and two, Chris?
We have two merchant accounts. One is our utility payments and the other one is everything else. And then, Joe, did you talk to them?
I have not, I'll wait and see what happened.
Yeah, when we finalize, you guys approve it, then we've got to verify that they, Joe's kind of got a different setup with his park stuff too. We've got to make sure that they've got all the options for us.
Two point seven five percent, I think is what I seen in there.
That's what it is current.
Oh, currently? Oh, it's just staying at two seven five then, okay.
Yeah, so if the, if the transaction is fifty dollars or less, it's a dollar fifty. It's over fifty, it's two point seven five, and the residents pay all the fees.
Has there been? Here's a thought, to try and get automatically withdrawn out of accounts. You see more and more an extra charge if you're using a credit card, debit card. You see a lot, five percent, four percent. If it's two point seven five, what about the thought of putting two point seven five if you're going to use a credit or debit, or hey, here's a ACH that you can automatically do in order to move more towards.
We always tell them that option, if they're utility payment, but I mean, they use this for building permits, dog licenses, car permits, garbage tags, you know, we don't have ACH option for all of those, room rental, concession stand, and their fees are different.
But it's two point seven five, but there's no minimum.
Okay.
So I'm saying it's just having, do we want to consider the two point seven five percent out of every charge? That's going to them, that's typical of any, any vendor. Is that something to think about going forward? Do you work that into it?
Put the cost on the constitution, is that what you're saying?
It already is.
It is.
The residents are paying it.
Two seven five.
Yeah, we.
Oh.
And any of the.
Gotcha.
It's a pass one. Yeah. Yeah.
Correct, perfect. Yeah, we're not that nice.
I mean, they're making the choice to use the card for convenience.
And some people don't like ACH, so I made that.
Right. And we take checks and cash, you know, they do a lot of.
Any other questions for Cindy there? Any other questions for Cindy there? Very none, consider motion to adopt this resolution.
Second.
Go home, please, sorry.
Aye, 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 aye.
Thank you, moving on to item number twenty. Discussion and possible motion. Regarding wastewater treatment three certifications for Brandon and Dallas. Brian is gonna share some information, there's some things near campus.
Yeah, I tried to explain as best I could, so we didn't have to spend a lot of time here, but they have actually already been granted the okay to forge ahead. With the wastewater three um certification previously. And in doing so, they were looking into how it's gonna, the requirements on what it's gonna take. When I did it, it wasn't that big a deal because I had some schooling before I came here, and they do not, so to compensate for that. They have to do CEU classes and a fair amount of them to get the required amount before they'll let them take the exam. And so the amount that we take currently, just for CEU maintenance. Is it taking forever to get to that point, so. We have some money in there for training, but to get them moving along faster, to get to the endpoint, we'd have to get them into some more classes, so. Uh I guess I'm just checking to make sure it's okay if I add a little bit to the budget for them to be able to take classes to get them to that point. Uh sooner than later, that if something happens, God forbid, to me, that we can get somebody to. Be here qualified that would be able to. Go through the motions to get into the spot to be able to just seamlessly keep things moving along here, as opposed to hiring outside. Because they're not qualified. If that makes sense.
Aye.
I didn't think it was a big issue, I didn't know if I necessarily needed to ask, but I didn't want it to be upfront and. And make sure everybody's on the same page. The most, yeah, all the classes around here within Des Moines, within the state.
Day or two years.
Yeah, so they're signed up for one um in February, February, that's three days in Des Moines. And Dallas has taken an online class, so he just has to go through the motions and and get the test results, and then he'll get like twelve CEUs for that one. But that one takes a month or two, by the time you read the big vote, so. But.
Do you know what the budget um adjustment needs to be?
Um we had originally, and this is just super only, so there was twenty five, twenty five hundred in training previously. Now I'm just asking to add another twenty five hundred, and that should be lots of money to make sure, we may not spend all of that. Because we don't have the time to take any classes, so.
Where are they, what organizations are they taking these classes to?
Uh there's a whole very variation on. Uh rural water, um. AWWA.
The usual.
You know, the Mac, there's a collections conference and stuff, so.
Any other questions for Brian? That, I need a motion to approve that budget. Second, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye, 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 thank you everyone.
Moving on to item number twenty one. Discussion regarding the twenty twenty five employee compensation.
Just let me know what particular one you want me to open, I've got consumer price index, employment CPI. Uh wage history of payroll projections that shows different percentages, and then. Survey of some towns that I could get to respond to.
Also, what are your thoughts?
I look at the wage history report on the bar right, Cynthia says back in two thousand seventeen, and I'll just. Use the last three years, two thousand twenty four, we added two point five plus fifty cents. Five percent plus a buck, seven percent plus a buck. Cynthia gave us the. CPI. For two thousand twenty four is two point six percent. Think I look back at last year, this month, and I think it was. From September twenty two to September twenty three was three point two percent, so it went down a hair. Employment cost, we had four point seven percent. And the year prior to that, September twenty two to September twenty three, it was four twenty, so it went down. Slightly, I I look at both of those put together. Mike, I remember you talking about if you could. Bring up your thoughts of how you like that extra fifty cents or above.
I know, I know how much you guys like me talking about that, so I'm gonna make it this easy this year. I'm gonna save one dollar for everyone and move forward.
That do though?
That's two point five percent for the higher end, between two and two sevenths, and then it's closer to four and a half. Between three and a half to four and a half for pretty much everybody else. Rich people like Cynthia don't need to worry about it as much as, you know, schmucks like Joe.
So Mike, are you suggesting no percentage, just one dollar flat increase?
Yeah, you know how much a eight percentage is.
Because I say that the problem with the problem with that is after doing dollars the last couple of years into a dollar again, eventually you're gonna get to the point where. Everyone's pretty close to making the same amount. And difference of labor is very separated.
Any other thoughts, counsel, there's one idea?
So two and a half on one end, said four and a half on the other.
Yeah, that shows a column.
If you go to um payroll projections, the one with the green lines, look at the far right columns. It shows fifty, a dollar, dollar fifty, et cetera, and what those approximate increases would be for each employee.
Is there a grand total of that?
Grand total as in like total dollars or increase.
You weighted the whole thing, what do it equal out to?
Wait, this is, these columns are based on amount, you come over here and you take a percentage, then it shows the change for each person.
You're asking the total amount and increase salary for the city?
Yeah, so in dollar times.
Forty, so thirteen times forty is five hundred twenty, five hundred twenty dollars a week, times fifty two weeks is twenty six thousandish. Did I do that math correctly wrong? Finally, using calculator. Sorry, twenty seven thousand dollars.
That'll take down all our overtime.
That's if everyone worked forty hours a week, fifty two weeks here, I I, who knows what overtime's gonna be down.
And what were the wages? Last year?
Twenty seven thousand less.
You mean, what's everybody's current wage?
Yeah, as a as a sum total without overtime, so.
Oh, I.
See what that plus twenty seven over whatever that was to see increase.
That's a little beyond my.
I don't, I don't have a report that shows total uh wages for twenty four.
Give me two minutes and. Yep, I'm more here.
Are we monitoring or calculating, counsel?
Yes. Mike's adding.
He's adding.
This is always our favorite time. Oh, I'm just texting my friends this whole time, what are you talking about? Seven hundred ninety three thousand dollars based on current rate, if you exclude our two part-time seasonals, which I do. And you just take Jason up to the top. Be forty hours a week, fifty two weeks. What I say, seven hundred ninety three thousand? Seven hundred ninety three, three twelve, add twenty seven to that.
And remember, the motion that you're making does not include the library employees, because the library board sets that. And sorry, Dustin, I'm assuming that it doesn't include Dustin, since he's only been here seven days, that's good.
Although I'm not gonna argue if we're given.
I was just gonna say.
They wait to see what we do.
So yeah, you would basically see a three point five percent increase in overall. Employee compensation. If you went up by down.
Typically the library's mirrors cities, I know.
No.
Wow, not a.
Part of it is, yeah, because you hired other people so high, and my people are so low. And this is retroactive back to January first, correct?
Yeah, typically, that's what we do, yeah.
You need to specify that.
In the motion, yeah.
So I like the three time, I just don't like the straight line approach.
Usually we do a hybrid of, we do a percentage plus a flat rate, so like fifty plus. Three, two percent or something like that, I was just trying to make it easier, because I know every year, everybody. Stabs me with their eyes.
The current suggestions, a dollar flat rate for everyone, which equates, if Mike's math is correct. A three point five percent increase in salaries overall, excluding overtime.
Or just a straight one, three and a half?
I just don't.
Twenty two options.
The only, my only, my complaint about that is people at the top, it keeps going like this, and I know Dustin, I've talked about it a little, I just don't. I don't like people, I don't like the increase, the the increase in separation, thank you. If each person is doing the same amount of work or the same quality of work, and the only defined metric is time that they've been here. And that's not to disparage the people that have been here a long time, because you're gonna say like, we're gonna stay here.
I understand that thinking, but I think it discounts the difference in responsibility.
I think it diminishes.
Yeah, yeah.
Do I have a, do we have a motion, am I hearing three and a half percent?
Everybody motioned?
I said a dollar, he said three and a half percent. No, because those are two different things.
So what's the reason for three and a half percent?
Because that's roughly a dollar raise equally applied to everybody from the top down.
I'll make a motion to three and a half percent.
Second.
All in favor? Well, this was a discussion only, again.
Well, I'm putting it in the the resolution, that's how I'll draft the resolution, is with everybody in for three and a half percent.
So this, alright, so we have a motion in a second. For three and a half percent, all in favor?
It's a resolution.
Will be, well, that's, okay.
Yeah, it's number twenty two.
Aye, now, aye.
Alright, motion carries three and a half percent. That's retroactive, January first. Okay, so that takes care of number twenty one and twenty two. That was my confusion, sorry. Okay, we've got a couple of budget topics here, this will be just real high level. General conversations or questions, um detailed discussions at the special budget meeting, but Shane's gonna talk about. CIP must have one two month project.
Yeah, so I'm just gonna kind of run through some of these items, I'm not gonna touch on all of them. Give it questions, just let me know, um. Manager said, well, you can. Review the information, kind of go over the information for you tonight and discuss it, you know, bring comments, questions back to the next meeting, but.
And let me just throw out, if you look at this, hopefully you'll look at it before the twenty eighth, if you have questions, send us an email. So that Shane or I or Dustin can come with the answer, okay?
So starting on the first sheet, the one year CIP, FY twenty six. The first couple of columns is the West Seminole Bridge and Intersections Project, so. Basically, this project's happened over a few years. The uh the numbers that are on five years CIP on the second page, that we brought forward to this this page. Down to the Eagleview Drive Water Main Extension Project. That project was added to be included with the West Seminole Bridge Intersections Project, but we removed it because of some issues with the. Federal funding process, environment, memory process. So we are pulling that out completely. One thing, counsel, she considers, and what this does is basically it extends the water main up at Eaglebeam Drive. Where it's gonna stop at the intersections projects, and it ties into the existing water main up at the Subowski's Edition. I think it's Henry and Haley's Edition. Some of you may recall, back when they did that project, they put in the water main for the city standards, so then when the city hopes up to it, they have it. So pipe is there, we just haven't got water into it, so we thought this project we extended, but. So the question that they need to consider is, do we want to push this project off in the future, put in five year CIP, the ten year CIP? Or do we want to include it with projects such as the, um, I think in pipe, we have a stall and drive, utility extensions. So it's over in that area, maybe that's something we just added to that project, but something for your consideration. Um, designed for the water supply treatment facilities, earlier in this meeting, we. Counsel approved the uh. Public hearing for the uh SRF planning and design loan for one point two seven seven, so. That project, the design, it was continuing. My head part, eight neighborhood park and restroom, building projects, so money, I think that funding funds were set aside last year, some funds are there. John's finishing up some work on that, meeting with the city staff here in the next week or so. So I think in one of the upcoming meetings, council will see some of that, that will go up, added close. Construction's anticipated here this summer. Uh sanitary steward park here, we just talked about that. One thing, the uh council can consider, right now, we've got it broken out, just to be kind of an annual thing. And this project, numbers came in pretty good, but we're trying to keep it under the bid limits, which is good. But it'll probably take quite a while to complete it, so we keep doing that, just figure an annual thing, do a little bit here and there. Just do it every year, or if you want to try to get tackling, get it done, you know, maybe do it in two or three bigger projects. But just let us know, you're good with just doing. Hundred fifty, two hundred thousand dollars every year, or if you want to try to tackle it over a few years and get everything done, at least in the original part time. So impact on how we show it on the CIP. Then down at the bottom of that first sheet, all the uh. Projects listed and highlighted in yellow, the new projects that were added. Possible projects that were added. Seventy sixth Avenue is the roadway driven projects down by the Iowa Land and Building Development Project. Thought was to try to get that out for construction in twenty twenty-six. Kind of along with Convergent, at this point, we haven't heard anything from Convergent, so right now, last we heard is they're gonna touch base with the city through this month in January, so let's see where that goes. There's a couple of different items for Convergent Energy Participation. Whether or not that happens this year, we'll hopefully find out here in the next month or two. We talked about Schuessley's addition, possible steward to that project, possible roadway improvements. Anything gonna happen with that? The city wants to put any money towards that in the planning. We do have, I mean, ten-year CIP, we do have East Cemetery Road Improvement Project, it'd be and the sanitary sure be included with that extension. That's for the entire roadway, it's not just for the portion in Punishment Schuessley's. We had Pirate Department Building Edition under that list. And then Joe had requested moving up three projects from the Parks Department, the town tennis and hookball courts, Bray Creek Park, restrooms, and the amphitheater down in the complex. So those are moved up from the backers here.
Last month, Schultz's wasn't here. Has anybody talked to them since to see once where they're at?
So Chris and I have been with him a week or so after the last meeting, last one we played. Just told him some of the issues and concerns for that and I think we talked to the council about really that property being my best suited for a higher use than just one acre residential lots. We shared that with, with him and.
So nothing definitive from him.
He took the four cell signs down and called the neighbor across the street to ask him if he was still interested in buying the property. So where it goes from there, I don't know. I was just told that over the weekend.
Okay.
That's, that's not, well, maybe he doesn't want to spend any money because he wants to make money.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
On a water extension to Henry and Haley, they can't do that with the road construction, why?
Because of the intersection, there's, yeah, there's different requirements with the federal funding involved in that process.
So we can do it, we just can't do it with this project or the federal funding.
We do it, it's gotta be living separate, so I mean, if the city still wants to do it, we can do it in separate.
And we do have the money on hand already for that project. I mean, we can reallocate it based on bond uses, but
Well, if we're gonna keep.
We did bond.
My theory is if we're gonna keep letting people build commercial property across the highway, we need to have water anywhere for fire protection. Because that storage place, how many buildings does he have now? Could that help storage, the land, sure, the little slug on struck in a lot of water across the highway, where either that or you're close, Highway one fifty-one.
I think, I think all of city staff would agree, it's, it's all development within the city could have sewer and moderate, but well, that hasn't really happened.
I just wondered what the catch was, if it was the government or.
I actually now talk to you in detail, all, all detail.
I was just tired at this point.
No, I was just curious on what happened.
No, it's just, it's just easier to pull it out and save time and money and so, but yeah, it's something we can do. And that's why I pointed it out, is you know, you wanna keep it on the one-year, the five-year, push it back to the ten-year, if you want to include it with another project, it is a smaller project. You know, maybe it's one of those things, you knew as a quote. So just different ways to to complete that project, city wants to do it or not. Okay, yeah, it seemed like the, you know, the optimal time is to extend this for water main to knock for about three, four hundred feet and whatever it was and tied in, but not always that simple, unfortunately. All right, second sheet. So those top two line items on the second sheet are the West Sematary Road Bridge and the Western Pier Road Intersection Projects, so basically that stuff needs to be moved forward to the one-year CIP list. We got the construction for the water supply treatment facility. That's still five, one, three years out. Before we actually get into the construction. I've been looking at it, maybe funding it or funding part of it, maybe for the next year CIP, even construction by closure of the two-year mark. The Eagleview Water Main Extension, we just talked about that, so that was broken up over a few phases, so that would be combined as one project and move wherever you'd like to see that. There's three, three columns that are blacked out, those were the Parks Project that were moved up to the one-year CIP. Minor side street project. Improvements along US Highway one fifty-one. I just want to point that out just because it's kind of a little different project, that's a year and a half or so, the city got, had a key report done along Highway one fifty-one through the city of Fairfax, and one of the recommendations for making some minor improvements, signage improvements and improvements at the side streets that intersect with the highway. So we added that on the, the CIP list. And then the Iowa Land and Building items. Those are on there, and the timing's kind of based on the Blue Mary Platte, the development agreement with Blue Mary Platte, and just kind of anticipated growth for planning purpose. Obviously, we don't know exactly when that area's gonna build out, but we want to put in the CIP, so we have it looked shown somewhere, have it accounted for development being quicker than that, or to me, greater longer than that, but that's kind of where the little project fell on five-year CIP. Um, then the library expansion, based on the conversations at last month's meeting, with the expansion on five-year CIP. And I put a number of four million dollars in there, that number can change, I just did that based on, I think the goal was three million based on the architect's estimate, but then if it takes, you know, three, four years, you got inflation, I didn't know if they included, you know, the design fees or property acquisition improvements to the project last, or anything like that, so so I just put four hundred, four million dollars in there for that item. And put that on five-year CIP.
Do we have the updated?
Yeah, that's just what I'm saying. What I have in the packet is not matching what you're talking about. So, yeah, so I don't know.
I emailed you on Friday?
Well, on Friday. It may be that it didn't get added to the packet, because on Thursday, I put in what I had, and I, maybe I forgot to update it on Friday. Friday was very busy. So I will send those out to everybody, make sure that you get the most recent, and make sure that the most recent has been the twenty-eighth packet. Sorry, I didn't realize I didn't have the most recent.
So then going on to the third page, which even most definitely was there. We done?
That was a Freudian slip there.
Didn't keep talking.
Part of the real change is that we didn't talk about it, it was a time limit now where it comes to me, and it doesn't look like that.
You can go ahead, Shane.
So, yeah. So with any of these projects, you know, the, obviously the one-year, so you're kind of tied into it, it's just whether or not you move forward with it, but the ten-year, the five-year, if you want to move any back, move any forward, I know if you want to move any five-year forward, obviously if you want to move a five-year forward, the one-year can be looking at real large projects, but smaller projects may be just from a time standpoint. But like ten years, kind of just, you know, obviously, projects that we are aware of, you know, either that we'd like to see them happen, or we know they're gonna have to happen, but they're just kind of out there for planning standpoint. But, so if there's any on there that you'd like to see moved forward, I know and submitted, and we discussed briefly at the last month's meeting, you know, the MPOs going through their twenty fifty long-range transportation plan. So I submitted that information with last month's packet, you know, if there's any projects on that that you'd like to see added to this list, even the ten-year or the five-year. You know, definitely look that over, let us know. Or if you want anything removed, I know in talking with the MPO, we met with them here, you know, really, the primary project on the twenty fifty long-range transportation list for the city of Fairfax is probably the eightieth street, the Highway one fifty-one intersection and or possible extensions, so I mean, that may be something, if that's, you know, the council likes to see that for the twenty-five year or not. Again, you know, a project like that takes some time to get it planned, get funding figured out, so on and so forth, so it wouldn't be possible to move up to the one-year CIP, but you know, those are the types of things. On the next month's meeting, anybody to discuss that, or like Cynthia said, should email before the meeting. Also on the ten-year list, we've got, you know, the new library, the new fire station, new city ball. You know, with these planned additions, I don't know if we want to pull them off right now. If you want to leave them on, it doesn't really matter, but if it's not really you know, if it is twenty years out, maybe you don't want to have on that list, you know, adding numbers that aren't realistic at this time. So those are things we can leave off the list, or leave them, it's up to you. And then the yellow rose at the bottom of that list were just added from the Iowa Land and Building Project based on that development agreement and anticipated growth, so. Any other questions with CIP? Great, thank you.
Thanks, Shane. Moving on to item twenty-four. Cynthia's provided in the packet, just some information on full point six budget, Cynthia, I just want to stop that a little bit.
So everybody has a printed copy of our worksheet that we'll work through on the twenty-eighth. I've got as much info in the notes or the columns that I know of, or my best guess, and or maybe a department had submitted. This on the screen now, that is the, our new valuations, it shows an eight point two eight percent increase in our taxable valuation, and so of course the state lowered our calculated general fund levy amount this current year, you know, we were at eight-ten. The current year is seven point eight six four oh eight, and they're lowering it again to seven point six three five oh three. This layout right here shows us filling in up to the eight-ten by adding levy for the insurance, we added that this fiscal year for the first time, I think it was in the forty-four thousand dollar range, so this additional decrease took another thirty-four thousand in from us, so I increased that to seventy-eight four. I did verify today that we actually have that much in general fund insurance costs, and we do, it was in the renewal in twenty-four, April of twenty-four was a hundred and twenty-four, a hundred and twenty-five thousand, so we're still well below what the actual cost is. And then the ag land, is that the three? No other levies, and you can see at the bottom here, it's still proposed to be the eight-ten. But this is one of the first things that you'll need to decide, no later than your February meeting, because we have to, remember, we have to let Lake County know what our levy will be, so they can put it on that tax statement, which you have to have the, they have to have that no later than March fifth, but they want it by March first, but if we decide at the special, or certainly after the February eleventh meeting, I'll make sure it's, it's there for them by February twelfth, so. We have a special scheduled for January twenty-eighth. Marion, are you going to be gone?
Is I'm gone.
Yes, I thought. Is everybody else still available? Any questions for me or? Based on the decision on the payroll, I'll put in some, fill in some numbers for the new year and pass them additionally. I will print these again for the twenty-eighth, if you can take these and start to look them over.
Is it possible to give things like an Excel file?
Yes. Does anybody else want it in Excel?
And so, or entertain questions prior to that meeting?
Sure, if, you know, if you look through it and you have questions, want a special, more detailed report on revenue or an expense, just let me know. Certainly easier to get your question as soon as possible, so we have time to gather the data that you might want to see.
I was gonna ask this before, but what's the theoretical like lore for the tax on the levy? I know it used to be eight-ten, but now it varies depending on.
So if we were a city that had, used the emergency levy, which was twenty-seven cents, I think, and no growth or very little growth, then it would be eight thirty-seven right now, but that goes away in next year of the, of the twenty-seven cents.
So when they adjusted, is there a lowest number for the taxable levy before we start using other levy resources to bring it back up to eight-ten?
So, well, if we would get so that we had a hundred and twenty-four thousand on that insurance line, although I'm sure this April's renewal is gonna be higher than that, so you know, unfortunately, the insurance costs keep going up, and you can levy for general fund or road use and road use insurance funds. So that one twenty-four, that was just general fund. I think the road use, when I looked at it today, was like twenty thousand. So if you got so, we needed to put more than that on that insurance line for our general insurance. You could come down here to the other employee benefits or the FICA IFRS, and you could levy as much as needed to get us to the eight-ten or whatever number you wanted to be at in the city's cost for FICA and IFRS in general and road use payroll. And then the other employee benefits, what we pay in general and road use for like the employee health insurance and all those other kind of benefits, so we have a lot of expenses we could be putting on the other lines before we'd be.
That's, that was, I was curious if there were other levy options to find a way to keep it at the eight-ten.
So it's going down to seven, seven, six, three, five, oh, three, and then how much more after that? Do we know the numbers the next couple of years?
Oh, no, because it's based on our growth, so until they, until they see.
Well, the state current discussion is they're looking at coverage and tax changes again, and now instead of a three percent cap, they're looking at two percent possibly. But that will change things again, if you have that.
Yeah. So one, yeah, we don't know what the legislations will be, and two, we don't know what our growth will, will do here. Right now, if you're over six percent, you have the three percent limitation.
Started session yesterday.
Yeah.
They're busy buying the southern counties of Minnesota.
Anybody have questions for me tonight on the budget?
Okay, we'll move forward to our special budget meeting on the twenty eighth. Moving on to number twenty-five. The claims, any question on the bills presented?
Well, I'll back up. Well, multiple things, but started out doing the normal meeting, it's like we do, we've got the green, I'm the cat, and anyway. So this fall, and then as they were there, told them, hey, that air conditioner, check it out, oh, that hasn't been working, so forth, so they came back to look at, look at the work, work on that, and as they were there. Look at the work, work on that, and as they were there, it's like, well, look at the front end, something seems a little loose there. So they started into that, so, the end of the. Combining the two repairs is one, and that's why the bill came high, and it's still high anyway. But, um, with that, the whole front end, it had the front axle, they ended up taking the whole front axle out, took it back to the shop. Bearings, they had to do machine work, someone machine worked, what, six thousand?
So they went to go take the bearings and races out, scarbed the inside of it, so then they had to have it machined to get the next part in. Which was their fault, their cost. They told me it was gonna be eighteen thousand for, sold, sold six or seven thousand to the mill.
But, well, it didn't bore it.
I don't know what they did, but they had for.
Oh, my God.
A week or two.
Yeah, because I remember last month, they kept mentioning the repair on it, and so we're just waiting and waiting and waiting, so it down for a while. Yeah, we got, they got it all done, put together, seems to be working good. Then we get the bill.
Kind of jumped out at me.
Yeah, the machine's still a great machine, after they did nothing. Uh, next year is probably gonna need tires, but. Um, I think it lasts a long time, uh, we can tell. How old is it? It's, uh, two thousand and eight, boy, yeah. Back, we, when we first got it, it was before I was here, um, they purchased it, they leased it at that time, when it was coming up for lease. And the, we talked about replacing that, 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 we're going back into another lease, but every machine out there, the same style and everything else. Everybody said, don't buy it. So we got to keep what you got and so forth, and the machine, there's another problem with it, and still isn't, it's a good machine. Still happens, or that.
It really is a very valuable unit for the industry, it's a highly sought after unit, because it doesn't have all the fancy stuff, and the depth, and all that stuff. And I'm sure it would go for good money if we wanted to sell it, but, you know, interesting.
Yeah, we don't want to sell it, we're gonna keep it. This time of year is when we use it the most anymore. In fact, before I was here, it was a daily operation, they didn't have a generator, they didn't have nothing else, so you use it all the time. Now it doesn't get used as much, but we own it. And, winter time's most used, it's the low, it's the newest norm. It's Andy Ed.
Whoever makes the motion for the claims, just include to approve this, um. Invoice, since it's over the ten thousand a pound.
Any other questions? Need a motion, including, improve all that specific ones, please. Motion. All favorit.
Hi.
Thank you, item number twenty-six. Opportunities for citizens on the agenda. I know you'd like to speak. Thank you. Move on to number point seven. Mayor's comment, um. Just wanted to. Show my appreciation for, um, Dustin, Dustin joining our staff. And welcome addition, and appreciate everyone's patience during our transition period as we're figuring out, just doing that.
I will revise the next agenda to add city administrator comment, but feel free to speak up tonight if you want, um, I didn't even think about that, um, I don't.
I don't think I have anything. Dustin, you want to say something?
I just wanted to say thank you, city council, for giving me the opportunity. Looking forward to working with all of you. Um, I appreciate you meeting with me. And, um, I, I'm looking forward to adding to, adding value. Helping you be responsive to your citizens. Please email me, call me, you all have my contact information, I'm at your disposal.
Consider a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Hi, hi, I swear I'm falling, falling right out of my chair today. I'm gonna fall right out of my chair.
Well, I wouldn't get you.
You know, I always stay on the end.